And Ms. Mullenbeck, we're ready.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Board of Education of Glenbrook High School District 225. Ms. Smith, could we please call the roll?
Mr. Downing, Mr. Glawacki.
President.
Mrs. Hope.
Here.
Ms. Mullenbeck.
Here.
Mr. O'Hara.
Here.
Mr. Schein.
Here.
Dr. Steinberg.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Dr. Gravel, have there been any changes to the agenda since it was circulated?
There have been no changes.
In that case, could I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This evening, it is with deep sadness that we pause to remember and honor the life of Mr. Lars Anderson, a beloved member of the Glenbrook South family who passed away on January 26th. Lars was a proud lifelong Titan. A member of the GBS class of 1988 and a dedicated instructional assistant since 2005, he spent nearly two decades serving students with compassion, patience, and heart. Lars supported hundreds of students in meaningful and unique ways, taking on many roles within our Special Education Department across countless classrooms, most recently with our TLS students. His tall, steady presence was matched by a gentle spirit and a deep sense of care. For many Titans, Lars was a source of comfort, strength, and unwavering kindness, leaving a lasting impact on students, colleagues, and our entire school community. Please join me in observing a moment of silence to remember Mr. Anderson. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the superintendent report. Dr. Gravel?
Thank you so much, Ms. Mullenbeck, and welcome to all of our students joining us from their civics class. Make sure when you get our picture that we're looking like extra, like poised and focused. A little bit of humor there. Today, we have a few topics, and we're going to start talking about the celebration of our Master Facility Plan. So last, last meeting, shortly thereafter, we created a new portion on our website devoted to the Master Facility Plan. Here, there are some opportunities for our community members to first access the complete list of projects. So those are the same materials that we included in the board packet, but just nice and accessible right from the website and searchable. Links to all of those different slide presentations that we had offered to the Finance and Facilities Committees over the last few months. And we even kind of did a bit of a snapshot of the board meeting recording, so if any community member wanted to re-watch the board's discussion and the administration's presentation from the last meeting, it's a one-click access without having to fast-forward or rewind anywhere. We're going to continue updating this portion of the website over the next few months and years. Our hope is that as we build this out, it might be a great roadmap for even the next 10-year plan that will cap in after this. So we'll look forward to, in the near future, highlighting different community engagement opportunities for individuals to come forward and, and express recommendations or ideas for projects that we already have planned, including those, you know, tiny, small projects of rebuilding our stadiums at Glenbrook North and Glenbrook South next summer. So we're looking forward to hopefully using this as, as a great way of starting our information sharing. I do want to thank Ms. Smith for taking the time to also write a nice snapshot in the board notes that was sent to all of our families, all of our staff members, following the last board meeting, and we're going to continue to reiterate what we're doing on the facility plan through our parent associations, our booster organizations, and really, anyone who invites us in and says, "What's going on?" It's pretty a major thing going on. So getting that out there and continuing to gather feedback. Next, I wanted to take an opportunity and just acknowledge some challenges that we've been facing within our overall county, and that is related to property tax delays. Right in this room, about a week ago, Commissioner Britton met with our district team, as well as superintendents from across his region or district, if you will. That included superintendents and business officials, where we identified the challenges of delayed property tax collections and ultimately them being passed on to taxing bodies such as school districts. I will say that the conversation got a little technical, all the way down to understanding when taxes were collected from taxpayers, were they being held in an interest-bearing account? And if it was in an interest-bearing account, where are the interest earnings ultimately going? It was there that we learned that a lot of the resources are, in theory, in an interest-bearing account, but what had been shared with at least members of the Board of Commissioners is that all of those expenses only pay for banking fees. And we were trying to understand, again, from a financial perspective, how millions of potential and interest over three months only cover banking fees. So I give that as an example of the level of technical discussion we were having, and Commissioner Britton was very receptive, took incredible amount of notes, and has committed to following back up with us on all of the questions presented. So as we get those answers, we will share them with the board and our community. Kind of looking in a forward direction, a lot of the software challenges that the county experienced with their property tax assessment system is actually dated to an old mainframe. And here's the interesting element, and, and for, I know at least Mr. Breetag, he can appreciate this from a Glenbrook perspective, the county was down to less than two employees who could maintain the mainframe. And by the time we got to last spring, all of them had retired. And so there really was a sense of urgency to transition off the mainframe into a system. Unfortunately, there was a variety of issues. Good news is, a lot of the issues that were identified, while there might have been workarounds put in place to get through the immediate needs, a lot of those issues have been resolved. So, the Treasurer's Office sent an email last week identifying that they anticipate on sending physical property tax bills on February 27th, and they do not anticipate any delays in the first installment of collections. Very important for taxing bodies such as Glenbrook, that receives approximately 93% to 94% of their funding through local property taxes. So, good news on Ms. Tarver's front from a treasurer's perspective, but just wanted to share that update with the full board. One other topic I wanted to explore today was just recognizing that we did have a small fire that took place at Glenbrook North on Tuesday, February 3rd. Most importantly, everyone is safe. There was no one injured, and I have to just publicly acknowledge the amazing response of the Northbrook Fire Department. Their station is not too far from Glenbrook North, but they arrived in less than five minutes. Their immediate response, as well as the support of our Buildings and Grounds Team that were there to guide them in and get them exactly where they needed to be, resulted in what could have been a much larger situation being contained to a single classroom. I do always recognize that whenever you have a fire situation, while one space might be impacted primarily, the odor and, and smoke travels to other spaces. So on the first day, on Wednesday, we had some of that challenge in, in different classrooms, and we consciously decided where class would be held and where it wouldn't be. But we've made good, good work of, of moving forward, and our restoration team was on-site the same day, and by the same day, I mean, at about 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, I'm forgetting which hour, already working to make sure that any of the water damage was addressed to be contained within the room instead of in the hallways, and that the majority of, of the challenge was kind of isolated to that one space. Recognizing that we don't have many culinary labs, over at Glenbrook North, we have two, and the classroom is scheduled quite heavily. It's a, it's a very hotly requested elective area for us. We did identify that we're going to relocate classes to a temporary location, which is going to be the GBN Staff Cafeteria. Our Staff Cafeteria will still be available this semester for staff to use it during the lunch hours, but on those non-lunch hour blocks, we'll be using it for classes. It was great to be able to work with not only our restoration company, but our teachers and the operations team at North in order to get that area retrofitted. From a visual perspective, this is what the area now looks like after restoration has taken place. So we've removed all of the flooring that was damaged. We've removed the ceiling grid in areas that were damaged, and also a variety of pieces of equipment that were damaged. This will continue to be cleaned for the next about week, week and a half, but just want to point out how quickly we've moved from incident all the way down to a restoration component. Along those lines, oops, some important steps. So, right after, or on the, the day following the fire, we already had a meeting scheduled with the district's architect, Arcon, and we decided to repurpose part of that meeting to talk about our culinary labs. For board members who may not recall, you know, the entire 10-year plan and the incremental projects happening, about two to three years from now is when we had scheduled for the culinary labs to be renovated. Because one of the labs will require substantial rehabilitation, we've gone down to a situation where we're planning on making a recommendation to accelerate that project to this summer. That allows us, for instance, not to replace a ceiling grid or flooring with items that we don't know what we need right now, and we would end up ripping up or, or doing something else was later on. So Kim and Lauren are working through that right now, and will bring forward a formal proposal for the board in the next two months. The good news is, because we have that alternative location in the Staff Cafeteria, students won't be negatively impacted. They'll just be going to class in a different room for a period of time. One of the other questions that has come up is, was the area, or why didn't the area have as much water damage as we have had maybe in, in prior incidents? And because of the age of this section of Glenbrook North, I just want to acknowledge that that portion of the building does not have a sprinkler system installed. This is something that we dug into previously at Glenbrook South when we had a, a fire situation. We've worked to, every time we modernize a space, we add sprinklers, but again, this was scheduled to be done in a few years. Now that the ceiling is ripped off and things of that nature, we'll be looking to add sprinkling into not only the impacted room, but the second culinary lab to address it as well, which is normally part of our process. What's convenient about this particular summer is that we're already planning to replace the HVAC unit above. So with the ceiling removed, it gives us an opportunity to look at alignment of ventilation, and we might be able to make some additional efficiency changes to meet the needs of a modernized culinary lab space, as opposed to just what was there for many years. The other thing I wanted to call out is, over at Glenbrook North, we have, and at Glenbrook South, we do have periodic times when our alarms sound. We go through, anytime there, there's an alarm that goes off, the fire department comes out, and then we also have our fire alarm provider, which over at Glenbrook North is Johnson Controls. They come out and provide or perform maintenance on the system and confirm exactly what happens. What we've been seeing a little more often than we'd like across our multiple facilities is that some of our sensors get dust in them, and that dust triggers a false alarm. So we're working with our Buildings and Grounds Team to review our maintenance approach and making sure that we're cleaning those sensors, and also making sure that our alarms are fully upgraded and addressed with any concerns that they identify. So, we have multiple service contracts in. Again, they're always out. We have no concerns, but whenever you have an incident or a false alarm, it's important to pause, look at how everything is set up, and make sure, if there are things that we could do to improve our experience and provide even safer facilities, that we certainly do that. So that is that. One last item, then I'll open up for any questions. Oops. We had mentioned, or Mr. Breetag mentioned, at the last board meeting that we were launching our climate survey to our families, our students, and our staff. The real important metric is, from a state report card perspective, is making sure that we hit a 95% response rate for our students. And as you can see from the chart above, we're at 88% to 89% response rate. Over the next few weeks, we will be reaching out to individual students who has not, who have not taken the climate survey and working with them to provide them that opportunity and get our metrics up a little bit. Sometimes, students were just out of school on the day that we took it, and we just need to follow up with them. The same is true for our teachers, which are separate from staff, just because the types of surveys they take, and then also working with our families. So we'll be sending reminders out to a variety of stakeholders and look forward to getting more feedback. Always as a reminder to our stakeholders, anonymous responses are, forgive me, survey responses are 100% anonymous. So we really encourage honest feedback so that we can continue making our schools even better than they are today. And that was a whole lot of updates, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Uh-oh. Outside of the areas around the GBN culinary labs that you just mentioned, how many spaces are there between all of our buildings that are grandfathered in and still unsprinkled?
Yeah, so we actually have maps. I can send them with the whole board, so you can see exactly what the spaces look like. It's not a majority, but it's not only 5%. So it's, it's a blend based on the age of the buildings.
So could we also see then where in the 10-year plan we've scheduled in to update those with sprinklers?
Absolutely.
Dr. Steinberg?
Quick question. I heard we have a goal for 90% for students. Do we have a goal for teacher and staff participation?
It's a great question. From a state report card perspective, the metric is defined only from student responses. Internally, we're looking to see similar results to what we had last year. Not recalling those numbers off the top of my head, but I will get them and share them with the board. And we can share an update once, at the next board.
Mr. Schein?
Since we have to do the sprinklers in the culinary lab, what about the adjacent spaces that sustain the smoke damage and whatever? I, I would assume that the adjacent spaces are also not sprinkled. If we go into the culinary spaces with sprinklers, will we extend those down the corridors to those other rooms instead of waiting for the future? Or is that not possible? Thank you.
We will follow up and incorporate some options when we develop that plan. It'll be presented to the board in the next month or two, and we'll include that as an option for consideration.
Mr. O'Hara?
Yeah, RJ, real quick, on the Cook County fella, you said he's going to be getting back to you. Did he give you a timeline, or just?
When we spoke, it was going to be about two to three weeks, so it should either be this week or next week. I just want to make sure I'm getting everything. I'm sharing current status of sprinklers at both schools, the plan, or where they fall within the 10-year plan, including staff target percentages for completion rate, which, again, will be based on prior years, and incorporating additional sprinkling that would happen at that part of the building, maybe capturing the whole hall, for lack of better terms.
Okay, Mr. Glawacki.
Sorry, just had, I guess, related to the, you referenced the smoke alarms and everything being tested by Johnson Controls and others as their issues. A few weeks ago, we had another issue at GBN with a false alarm. Is there a schedule for how these are checked routinely outside of when there's an incident, and how often is that?
Yeah, so our district operations team met last week to talk through how North kind of reviews their system on an ongoing basis, as well as how South. Just trying to figure out if there's ways we can learn from each other. We are looking to institute a little more comprehensive of a sensor checking plan. The system itself is supervised, and that means that there's information always being communicated back and forth between the sensors that are in rooms and the, let's just call it the, the head-end system. And then that information also communicates out. Both of the systems also have the ability to generate a report that sometimes can proactively identify areas where there might be dirty sensors. So we're looking to actually make sure that we have a plan in building-wide on a monthly basis to address that, and I can share a report out on that once it's finalized.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Gravel.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Moving on from the superintendent's report, we are, now we'll have board reports, and we will start with Dr. Steinberg reporting out from the Finance Committee.
Good evening. And so, Mr. Glawacki and I went to the Finance Committee. We, the committee discussed four items. Interestingly, Dr. Gravel mentioned about the 10-year facility plan. So the first item is related to that. As you may be aware, when we do facility projects, we need to subcontract an architectural firm, that is the one that prepares the bids and all the specifications, and then we have to contract another firm, that is the one that manages the project. And as they were looking at all the projects, they realized that there are some projects where we may be able to supply the same type of service with an internal position instead of having to depend on external contractors that are attached to a specific percentage of the total amount. And in this particular case, and we're going, they're going to share this with us next week, but there are a set of projects in the first three years that, in theory, could give us a potential saving that projects will cost about $3 million for three years altogether. I'm sorry, this is 3, 6, almost 8, $7.5 million. And when we look at the potential for payments for the architectural firm and the management firm, we're talking about almost $1 million of expenditures, that if we could manage differently, could imply savings for the district. So we're going to be getting a proposal for a position that will be taking care of these, these issues for projects that are not of a scale that need still to work with Arcon and, and the management firm. So this is coming to us next week, in, next meeting, not next week. The second item is a, a proposal to look at the way we deal with facilities when we are not using the facilities, so rental of facilities, as there seems to be some interest of, of local teams or other, other organizations to use our facilities. So there's a proposal coming to offer some of these facilities for rental at a market price, so, market rate. So, so what we collect for that could help us support the facilities and, and, and other, other issues. And the last two are, I know we're going to talk in depth, so I'm just going to briefly mention. We've got an update on, on the school operating budget, which is 15% of our total budget, on, on the proposed increase of that budget based on need, and an update on student fees. Should I share something on there, or just simply say we've got them?
We'll be sharing a full report on student fees at the next meeting, so we can share that.
So we will get those next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Steinberg. We also have Mr. Glawacki reporting from his attendance at the Glenbrook North and Glenbrook South Parents Associations.
Thank you. So, both groups, very, good turnouts. We had 20-some at the GBS Parent Association meeting and almost 30 at the GBN, so a little better showing at GBN. Going to guilt some people. But had good agendas. I'll start with the GBN one. It had Mr. Targen, who spoke about activities and how did students get engaged, working with parents to help them be aware of how that is. There was a great article he shared, actually, that a student wrote for the student paper about engagement and the courage to engage at things, and how that generates your perspective. So I've been sharing it with everybody, including people that work for me, about how they make their world better around them and how they can do it and stuff, because this was just a fresh, quick read and stuff. So, at both meetings, the GBS one, that was actually focused on the facilities plan and update. As part of the GBN one, there was a moment where we do an update on what the various committees and everything, and so Beth and I did one on the facilities, that that was something being discussed. And parents at both organizations are very excited to see more details, to contribute to, to the process, share their thoughts, because they want to make sure that, from their perspective, that we do have the best facilities that, in the area that we can have, and realize at the same time, there's a budget. There's limited, and that we have to work through this together. So they're very eager to work with us on that and everything. So they're very excited to see about the upcoming dates. And that is it from both parent groups.
Wonderful. Just to give a shout-out again to, we do have the nice new website that has all that information available. So anyone who's listening and is interested, it's a one-stop shop for finding everything out that you want to about the Master Facilities Plan, except for the details on the culinary labs, because that's going to be changing. But, okay. Okay, great. Next item on the agenda is recognition of community visitors. I do not believe we have anyone signed up to speak tonight. Okay, so we'll move on to our consent agenda. Before we do that, I do want to encourage anyone who is not able to attend meetings but has ideas that they'd like to share with us to call us, shoot us an email, you know, use Parrot Square, any of those ways to communicate with us. We would be happy to, to hear your ideas. Okay, that does take us now to our consent agenda. Dr. Gravel, are there any changes to the consent agenda as circulated?
There have been no changes.
In that case, do we have any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Could I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Glawacki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Schein?
Yes.
Dr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Ms. Mullenbeck?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. That takes us to our Discussion Action Agenda, and we have one item, a mere one item on our Discussion Action Agenda tonight. That is the enrollment forecast update, which is a perennial favorite. Thank you, Ms. Bonner.
So good, I get to do the favorite topic of the board. So since the 2014-2015 school year, the district has performed two types of enrollment projections. The population forecast, which is calculated by our external demographer, Dr. McKibben, and the cohort survival method, which is calculated by our internal staff. These projections have become important tools for long-range planning and budgeting purposes. These projections are updated annually using October 1st fall housing data. The population forecast is the most sophisticated and assesses the impact of factors such as fertility rates, housing patterns, mortgage rates, mortality rates, unemployment rates, and so on. This comprehensive approach leads, lends itself to increased accuracy in long-term forecasts. The cohort survival method is performed internally and is strictly formula-driven, and calculates ratios of students as they progress from one grade to the next. The ratios are then used to project future enrollment. This method has proven to be the most accurate over a two-to-three-year period. Given the population forecast has a longer-term accuracy level, that's the one we use for budgeting and for planning purposes, as the one I'll talk you through tonight. So this is Table 1. It compares this year's population forecast with last year's and shows the variance. Typically, our variance is less than 1%. This year, we had a slightly higher variance, and you can see this year's actual enrollment at at GBN is 36 students less than what was projected, and at Glennbrook South, 63 students less. The primary reason is being that there's a lower, slower number and rate of existing home sales compared to last year. So according to our demographer, empty nesters are actually holding on to their homes longer, which is resulting in less homes on the market and less new, younger families moving into our area. Overall, the 10-year projection is uneventful, which is good. It means relatively steady enrollment over the next 10 years. At Glennbrook North, enrollment is projected to decline slightly year-to-year but will remain within approximately 5% of current enrollment over the next 10 years. In fact, enrollment 10 years from now is projected to be within seven students of today's enrollment. At Glennbrook South, enrollment is projected to decline modestly over the next several years, then stabilize, and then trend upwards slightly toward the end of the projection period. Overall, at Glennbrook South, enrollment is projected to be 64 students less in 10 years than it is today. And tonight, we present this to you for informational purposes.
So just to add a few more comments, we've known, when I first got to Glennbrook, I want to say Glennbrook South was, and in the Roman, closer to 3,300, with what we, at the time, referred to as bubble class. We've seen just simply smaller classes enroll in at the freshman level, which is why we're starting to see a decline. But on the flip side, we are starting to see an increase in population projected from Glennbrook North. One of the questions that actually came up at the parent association meeting was, you know, will South always remain the larger school, or will Source, North surpass? There's always a variety of factors here that we don't control. For instance, is there going to be a large housing development that takes place in one of the villages that we weren't anticipating? The majority of developments taking place in both villages really have been targeted. So, for example, the Glenn, the village of Northbrook has a significant gap in their housing market that they've identified, which is creating housing stock for empty nesters, individuals who are looking to downsize but remain in the community. Over in Glenview, we do have a few more parcels of property that may not be age-restricted, per se, or targeted towards age, but are limited in the number of bedroom counts that they have. So you wouldn't see very large families moving in with multiple kids, and sometimes that, that controls factors that the demographer takes into consideration. On a low level, you'll notice that Glennbrook South drops down to a low population in the 2,700s. On the flip side, Glennbrook North starts coming up into the 22, 2,200s, getting, in some projections, as high as near 2,300. But there's still always going to be a gap. It just comes down to the number of units that are available in the municipalities, how they're being built, and then individuals who are staying within the community versus moving out. Over at Glennbrook North, there was a possibility this trend could have substantially changed if the Green Acres Country Club was converted to a substantial residential area, not just targeted for 55 and over community. That size wouldn't have been the same size at the Glen, but would have been a substantial game changer like the Glen was for Glenview. We don't have anything on our horizon now that would greatly impact these numbers, but do know that things always change, and that's why we do this every year. But happy to answer any questions from how this impacts and how this compares to prior years.
Mr. Glawacki, any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for reminding me that this came up during the GBS parent, the other, I guess, facet to this, if you could remind me of the physical limitations of both buildings and everything, because while we, because the suggestion was, do we start redoing boundaries because population changes? And I know there have been some discussions in the district about that over the years.
Yeah. I'll probably have to ask Mr. Schein to recall, because it was the year before I came, or perhaps not, there were discussions.
I'm good. I remember those discussions.
There were some discussions of boundaries and the decision at the time, if I recall.
It was like a Packer Bear Stadium.
Yes.
Right, right, right over there in the, in the lyceum.
Good, good options there. The decision at the time was not to make any adjustments. If we, the challenge on saying what the capacity is of each school is, any demographer or master scheduler will start looking at specialized facilities. So back when we go, or if we go back to 2013, 2014, the district focused on the number of science labs that were available to meet the needs of students. General-purpose classrooms candidly are just easier to navigate through, but science labs are limited in the number of stations and number of students you could educate. The secondary factor that they were using, if I recall, was physical education space. We know that Glennbrook South as a facility can hold in excess of 3,300 students. We know that because we've done it. That does not necessarily come without challenges. On the flip side, we, and I'm forgetting the highest point in Glennbrook North's history, but we're pretty comfortable with GBN from a space constraint hitting 2,400 to 2,500 without significant modifications. However, there are constraints with that. The number of electives that you offer, the number of specialized classes that you offer. When you need more space, it means you're going to have to condense down options. So there are some capacity challenges from that perspective. The only other comment on boundaries that I would offer is, there are areas within the district that we sometimes refer to as choice. There are neighborhoods that individual or students or families who live within there can choose between North or South. I think based on where some of the developments are happening, specifically along Willow Road, there might be more of those areas that the board can consider, but right now, it has not been an active review by the administration.
Thank you. Dr. Steinberg?
I wonder, this may be small, but as we look at the outflow versus the inflow, not people that graduate, but, you know, freshman to sophomore, sophomore to junior, and junior to senior, is this significant, non-significant? Does this, you know, we're talking about 90 students, so is there an impact? Are we losing students either because they're moving out or because they decide that for whatever reason, they cannot continue?
Laura, can you remind me, our mobility rate in general, in and out, which generally matches, is it around 200 a year?
Correct. It pretty much balances itself out, though, between those that wind up transferring out and then are new transfer in. Yes, I would say right around 200.
So I wouldn't say there's any rationale except families moving in and moving out, just, there's no causation that we're aware of?
That's what I was asking. If that's the case, that's great, but if that's not the case, if we have more people, we don't know if everybody moves out. We may assume that some people decide to, I don't know, do homeschooling or do something else. So that's where idea, it could be significant or not, if it's two or three. If you say we get 200 new people out of mobility, and we get 200 people out of mobility, is that the people that left is just because their parents decided to move or they had to move, not because somebody wasn't too happy or thinking that this school, this district. So I'll take it on a positive way. It would be great to say that 99% of our students decide to stay in school.
Yeah, we definitely, we've never tracked specifically transition to homeschool, transition to private school, but historically, the majority of our families that choose to go private do so after 8th grade, not mid-high school. There's always individuals who might be making different family choices at times, but there's no significant trend that I'm aware of.
That's great, thank you.
Mr. Schein?
Two questions. The Green Acres site you mentioned, is that, is anything happening with that?
So the Green Acres site was a fascinating case study. It was acquired by the DuPage Water Reclamation District as a pathway to connect to Lake Michigan and no longer buy water from the city of Chicago. So they are looking to leverage that connection to Michigan, the lake, and then pipe it all the way to DuPage.
Mr. O'Hara is consulting a map right now.
But you're speaking present tense, past tense?
The deal was, I'm forgetting my dates, I think the deal was closed almost two years ago.
Oh, so they're gonna do it?
Yes.
So they're putting a water production plant there? No.
They are, what was explained to me is they are connecting a pipe that, they also bought some more property that connects on the other side. Yes. And they, there's not going to be treatment happening at the Green Acres site. They're gonna, they bought the whole parcel, recognizing that they didn't have the full plan yet, and then, once they have it all set up, it's, like I say, a fascinating case study, in 10 to 20 years, then they would reallocate parcel that they didn't need.
Okay, and then the project that's going on in the corner up here at Finkston and Willow?
Yes.
Can you speak to the student, number of students we expect to come out of? Because it, I don't know, because that, to me, would seem the natural one to flip over to North.
That would be a great example of a choice.
Potentially, but I don't know if it's even family housing, so.
So it is family housing. If you'll give me a moment, I will pull up the student yield report on that. As Dr. Johns mentioned, it was very low.
What kind of housing stock is it? Househouses, okay.
So young families, primarily.
Okay. Does anyone recall what the name of the neighborhood was?
It's called the Willows.
Yeah, it was, it was a small number.
Small yield. Yep, primarily young families, if any families at all.
I will get it for you.
Any other? Oh, thank you. Ms. Hope? Mr. O'Hara? Nope. I had two questions.
Okay.
One is, do we know anything about Northbrook Court? Is that just?
Northbrook Court is a secondary case study.
Could be anything.
Northbrook Court continues to evaluate plans. I, I'm cautious to comment on it because I recall a plan, but then the plan has changed multiple times, but.
So it's just a wild part.
The goal was, the goal is, it's, it will be a future mixed-use development that will likely have some residential component.
Inkling of a framework, okay, great. My other question was with regard to our feeder districts. When we do this sort of population growth, you know, gamesmanship, do we, are we in any way, like, reaching out to them to see if our estimates are similar, or, you know, do we, we do, okay?
So in order for us to do our work on the cohort survival or the population forecast, we require all of their enrollment by grade level. We go a step further, it's the report I was pulling from Mr. Schein, our student yield report, where we actually gather all student addresses and the number of students by grade level to determine, in a neighborhood, based on a product type, a three-bedroom house, a two-bedroom house, how many students are netted from it. And we share all of that information with each other. So they'll use our numbers, we'll use their numbers.
Okay. And then, actually, I have another question, just came up when we were talking about transfer students, and you had mentioned that we don't typically see a lot of movement from private to public midstream. It would happen if we were to have students that were in the, assuming, let's say, District 34, but decided to go to Lowell, for example, that would happen at 8th grade.
Correct.
Do we see the same thing happening where we have students coming from private schools to the district at the same time?
Laura, do you want to talk about some of the trends you've seen?
Absolutely. So it kind of depends on the year, with no real prediction in terms of how many are going to be attending South or North versus attending, let's say, St. Norbert's or OLPH. A lot of it depends on enrollment and who gets accepted to those schools. Most of them will start the preregistration process with us and then are hesitant to do the registration process, because it's really around the same time that they start finding out whether or not they'll get accepted. This year happens to be a high percentage being accepted into some of the private schools. It just varies depending on the year, though.
Okay, so it's hard for us to predict. Okay, yep. Okay, those are mine.
Mr. Schein? The number of students for Charlie Court. Eight high school students.
I sent a picture out in my backyard, right?
Eight. Overall, student yield, elementary would have six at the middle grades and 12 at the early childhood through 5th grade. Let me contrast that. The last proposal, which was very long ago for Northbrook Court, estimated a yield of 172 high school kids. So that's not on the books anymore, but it gives you an idea of different things you have to monitor. Another example would be the Pearson property, Scott Forrestman property, which is in development now, and that has a projection of 16 high school students. So just to give some illustrations, but I'll share the report, too, with the board, so you can look at them all, Bay neighborhood.
Oh, Mr. Glawacki?
Sure, well, actually, a comment and question you made, Ms. Mullenbeck, that reminded me of something. RJ, regarding, I guess, the feeder districts and everything, as we're discussing these population numbers with them and stuff, I recall last time, there was a, one of the strong arguments that were being made by the feeder districts and some of the families was keeping the cohorts together as they came into it, from a social development perspective and everything. And I would just encourage, I guess, as we're talking to the feeder districts, to explore that again with them, if there's been changes from their perspective and families where they want to keep. We have a number of feeder districts that's split, and they'll split the classes, some go to South, some go to North, and some of the smaller ones, we're making arguments, we should try to keep these kids together so they have a social support network.
So, Mr. Glawacki, to your comment and also what Mr. Schein was asking, the residences at Charlie Court would be a great example. That's a Northbrook-Glenview District 30 boundary. And so that is, is one of our districts that has the most splitting that happened. So we will follow up with the superintendent, just to have a little understanding on their thought on it. I think my daughter herself has lived through the process of being in a school that was split four ways, and there are some certainly realistic challenges that happen there. So let's see what they share, and I'll bring that back to the board.
Yeah, the benefits and, I guess, challenges both ways, so curious what their take is now, as they've had some time to.
Yep.
Examine it.
We'll bring it to you.
Did any board members have any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Gravel and Ms. Bonner, for that report. The next item on our agenda is possible topics for future board meetings, and I see that we have two items that will be scheduled, it looks like, for our next board meeting on February 23rd. One, ensuring post-secondary success for all students. So this will be a presentation from the college counselors.
Yes, so Dr. Cummings is pulling it together. It will most certainly highlight our college counseling services. It'll also provide some more background on the role of the school counselor in general, which is really important with respect to Goal 1 of the strategic plan, which is those personalized learning plans. And so it'll be a presentation of information, but also opportunity to ask questions, and we'll probably have some follow-ups from that presentation as well.
And I know that this was a subject of some interest to some board members, so I'd encourage them, if they had anything in particular they wanted to have addressed, to maybe shoot Dr. Cummings an email, just to let her know what she'd like to home in on. Okay? And then we also will be having an overview of the Glennbrook Academy of International Studies at the same board meeting.
Yeah, it's probably been 15 to 20 years since the board has learned about the academy. And now with our new instructional supervisor of the Glennbrook Academy and advanced studies, Ms. Debbie Cohen will be. Mrs. Debbie Cohen will be here, share with you an update on where they're at, some great progress they've made, and the future for what the academy will hold. It'll be a great conversation.
Excellent. That brings us then to Item 10, which is our closed session. And we will be having a closed session this evening to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. And that's Section 2C1 of the Open Meeting Act. Could I please have a motion to take us into closed?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Well, look at that. It's only 7:50.
We can go right in if you want.
We can go right into closed, I think, unless you guys would like to take a, I don't know, a half-hour break? No, we'll go right into closed.
Mr. Shine would like a half hour.